Let's do the flag, echo the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call number, roll call starting on my right.
Counselperson Josh Hearn.
Counselperson Brent Byer.
Mayor Jimmy John King.
Counselperson Craig Anderson.
Counselperson Jeremiah Meldge.
All right, I'll take it. Right now, we've got a presentation we've got to take care of. Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. Carla? Stay out there, the marksman will get one please.
I get a pinch hitter.
Uh-huh. Okay, for anyone doesn't realize, we've been getting this award since 2012. And our new financial director has taken over, and we're still getting this award. This is to commemorate that achievement. The clothes is the medallion, which, God, this is heavy. There's the medallion, which Carla earned for us, which will go on this. It'll be added to our existing plaque as a testament to the government's commitment in this town to producing annual reports that evidence the spirit of full disclosure, full disclosure, and transparency, Mark.
Then pick our luck.
Because of you, we got the award again this year, and we're working on it again for next year. Is this way? I'd like to personally thank you, Carla, for what you've done in the financial department here. The help from the other departments keeping you. So your job's easier for you to do. But once again, we have received this award, and I know we're going to receive it again next year. So, thank you very much, and hang this up.
Appreciate it.
Okay, we'll be looking for approval of tonight's agenda.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Say, any additions?
Should be good.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Approval of council meeting minutes of June 22nd, 2021. Special council meeting of June 22nd.
I want a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve the special meeting minutes. So we have a second. Second, Jeremiah. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Approval of minutes of regular council meeting of June 22nd, 2021.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Josh made the motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that also carries. That'll take us on to finance and budget. We'll do the accounts payable and the accounts additional listing for accounts payable. And Carla, you're going to give us a highlight of budget review, first half.
Uh, yep.
Okay, so let's do the accounts payable listing and the additional accounts first. Any questions? Ask the finance director. Carla?
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. We have a second. Any questions or concerns on the finance? All right, hearing none, I'll say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Carla, you have a budget review, that first half budget review.
Yep, yes, you have it, you have it, and that's pretty quick and easy and, um... But I just wanted to kind of give you a snippet of what we've got going on for the first half of the year and where we're at, um, with all of the budgets. And a lot of times, as you guys know, you see this all before, so we don't get the tax payments until, um... Until July, so it doesn't look like the revenues are coming in quite where they should be and all of that. But just kind of looking, so looking at that, a lot of our revenue does come from tax payments. So we've got, so it looks very short at this point. Um, here's just another way to look at it. Right now, we're at 18% of our revenue budget, and like I said, tax payments haven't come in, and they have already actually come in for July, and then that makes a huge difference for that. And then this is, I give you just additional details and stuff where we're sitting with all that, from the budgets, um, to the revenues and what percentages. So at 18% at this point, I think things are looking like they're on track, looking out of the ordinary. Just another kind of different graph looking at kind of where we're at. Uh, expense-wise, um, this is, you know, we are where we should be for most things. There might be some line items that we have been heavier on than other line items, but for the most part, nothing is looking out of whack or anything like that, where we're more than half of the budget. And the capital expense budget, usually, we do spend most of that towards the end of the year, or it's on the bigger projects that kind of get paid out later on. So, we're at less than 30% of our expense budget at this point. So all of that is on track moving forward. Um, and then there are details in there that kind of give you a breakup between everything, um... You know, kind of moving forward. So, nothing is, I mean, if you have any questions on anything, if there's anything out of whack or anything that you'd like to know about.
Any questions for Carla about the first half? An award-winning finance director. Hearing none, if you're all fine with it. Thank you, Carla. We'll move on to motions in general business. Is everyone here for the comp plan?
Yeah.
First item under motions in general business will be a presentation on the comp plan that we're working on. As per council direction, the comp plan steering committee has begun the process of updating the 2010 plan and creating a community vision for 2042 with actual steps to implement that vision. Input gathered from the community will guide the development of this plan. Bree Grace is here from SEH. She presented the public participation plan draft for discussion and your approval. She presented to the steering committee and planning commission on July 6th. Both bodies have approved the plan being submitted to the council. So we're going to hear from Bree, and then our action will be to approve the public participation plan as submitted or if we want to change this. Bree, it's all yours.
Thank you very much. So I'm very excited to work with you and, um, and the community of Stewartville to help put together a process of gathering public input, um, formulating a vision for the next 20 years, and then incrementally, we will put steps in place for the next 10. So conference plans are updated every 10 years. Approximately, your last plan was adopted in 2010, um, so we're doing a full update of that plan. One of the big components is updating the land use map, the future land use map, so that'll guide where development goes, residential, commercial, industrial. Uh, and then once this vision is created, as a kind of a subsidiary project or secondary is, um, updating the zoning map to reflect that. But at least, um, it's an exciting time to gather public input and start to put that vision together forward on how, um, the city will be developing. In an effort to make this a very transparent and open process, uh, we've developed a public participation plan, which is in front of you, and it outlines the different methods, uh, which we will be using, um, to reach out to the community and engage the community. So as noted at the bottom of page one, and I think you all have this, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so at the bottom of page one, um, we're identifying that the first big effort will be a community survey. So it's a, it's a survey that will predominantly be online, uh, but will have paper copies that will be available, uh, here, at the library, at the senior center. Uh, and we ask, um, a variety of questions, getting to that kind of big conference picture, um, that we'll be updating for the city. So we're looking to have this open. We're close to finalizing it, but looking at, um, starting it in a week, maybe two, and then running it probably through the end of September, um, so that we can reach out to different groups throughout the community, uh, including the full district, Chamber of Commerce, the different civic organizations, um, and, uh, work with them so that their members and, uh, all community members respond to the survey. So following the survey, uh, we'll be having, um, two big public involvement meetings. I'm looking at the top of page two on the public participation plan right now. So first, we'll be having a public workshop. Uh, this will be, uh, September approximately, where we'll have different hands-on activities, um, to talk about the future land use map and start to get some, uh, more guidance from the community about future development. And the second item is the, uh, public open house. And this typically is held, um, towards the end of the process, where we have a draft map, we have a draft planning document, and we ask for the public for their comment on it, so that they have something to respond to. Uh, and we have those public open houses before the approval process and before the official public hearing, just so there's time to work on the comments that we receive, um, and incorporate those into the document. Uh, and the third item is stakeholder meetings. Um, so those are meetings as, um, as issues or opportunities come up, uh, it allows us to be flexible to sit down and work through some, um, specific items with specific groups. We will be hosting a project website, um, that will be linked to the city's website. It'll be linked to, um, the city's Facebook page and LinkedIn account. Uh, but it will be a main source for, uh, all the documentation, uh, on the project. So when meetings are, the links to the survey will be there. There, we also added, um, a subscribe button, so every time the, the website is updated, people can get a notice. Um, press releases, we also plan to use those, uh, as a mechanism to reach out to the public. So we've been working with Cheryl on, um, one, um, that we'll send out shortly, um, with the project kickoff and announcing that the community survey will be starting. Meeting notices will be posted in public places, such as city hall, uh, and the online meeting calendar. Public hearings will be posted in the Stewartville Star. Uh, during the planning process, we'll also work with Olmsted County and other municipalities to make sure they're invited to the planning process. And guiding us through the process, we have a steering committee set up for the project. Uh, and that has a member of the planning commission, it's the planning commission chairperson, a member of council, we have an EDC representative, uh, in Cheryl and Bill, just helping, guide us as we kind of work through the logistics of the project. Um, but then ultimately, this steering committee will be relying on the planning commission to set the policy guidance. Uh, and when it comes to approval, uh, we're thinking that the planning commission and city council could have a joint public hearing, uh, here, gather any public comment that may happen then. Um, we could take a pause if there's comments that need to be refined and reflected. Uh, otherwise, the planning document would be approved by the planning commission, uh, and then coming back at a future meeting to a council meeting, uh, for adoption. So overall, I believe this is about a 15-month process. Uh, so we will be going slow and steady, but working on updating that, that thick guidance document for the city. Any questions for me?
So you're looking to wrap up next spring, are you, or by this first of the year, or?
Uh, I think it's next fall.
Okay, so you've got a lot of meetings in it going.
Yeah, yeah, there's, yeah, I mean, we start with, um, updating all the demographics. Um, so some of the information from the latest census is out, but some of it we're still waiting on. Um, so we'll use what we can. A lot of it right now is the 2019 community, uh, ACS community survey from the census bureau. So we rely on that, um, you know, as we update the land use map, that's going to take quite a bit of time, going through parcel by parcel and trying to figure out what makes sense for the future. Tied in with that, then we'll be looking at, um, transportation upgrades and utility extensions, uh, and making recommendations on all of that. Um, and then you get into parks and recreation, recommendations, you know, other facilities.
And through this process, like PMZ and stuff, we'll be looking at if we have, uh, our R1s and R2s and stuff in the right place, and if they need to be shifted around.
Yep.
Yep, and it's, so through the process, we're not updating the zoning map, but we'll be making those bigger picture recommendations on kind of that next step after this project is the zoning map. But this is the guidance that's, that the zoning map depends on.
Questions? Jeremiah? Josh?
No. I don't think this is here at all.
Great, sounds good. When do you plan on getting the survey on, online or, you know, here the next month?
Maybe the next week or two.
Oh, week or two.
Yeah, hopefully the next week. Um, we received a nice set of comments back from the city, uh, just two or three hours ago. Um, but we're, we're really close to finalizing it. So there's, I think it may be a little bit more back and forth on some of the questions, but pretty close. And then we have, uh, we'll start to advertise around town too.
Sure, good. Glad to hear that. All right, no other questions? No, you got, you've been working hard, you got a lot to go, but thanks a lot for it.
Look forward to working with you, Mark.
Thank you. All right. Glad to take us to the next item. Which, under general business, will be quick claim, deep, quick claim deed reaffirming administrative action. When the building located at 102nd Street Southeast, parcel ID 54.34.4.
Mayor King, can I have your due, sorry?
Yeah, go ahead.
Can we go back to the item we just discussed and get a motion to adopt the plan?
I am so sorry.
No, it was my fault.
No, it's my fault. I'll take a point for this one, you don't have.
All right.
I'll make the motion to adopt the plan.
I'll second. We got a motion, we got a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous.
Thank you. I'm sure if I missed that, I would be.
That one's on me. Now they're going to vote if they want me to keep doing this or not. You can leave or you can stay, or whatever you want to do.
Okay, thank you.
And back to the next item. When the building located at 102nd Street Southeast was sold in 2017, the buyer's title company determined that the city owned a 20-foot wide strip of the property's parking lot immediately adjacent to the building's east wall, the west 20 feet of the east 56 feet of the property. Assuming the property had been dedicated for public use as an alley, the buyer requested the city vacate the alley. Staff's initial reaction to the vacation request was favorable. They had been able to locate no records of the city ever maintaining this strip of property. Instead, it appeared that building's previous owners had been solely responsible for its maintenance, along with the rest of the parking lot. Although the parcel could have been used to access nearby properties, all of these properties had other legal accesses. Finally, the buyer's request would not only clean up this title to the parking lot, it would also reduce the city's future maintenance costs and potential liability. For these reasons, the city noticed a public hearing to vacate the alley. However, before the individual notice was sent to the adjacent property owners, staff learned that the parcel was never actually dedicated for public use. Because there was no public roadway to be vacated, the public hearing was canceled. And individual notices were never sent to adjacent property owners. Instead, the city held feet title to the parcel, therefore, staff was advised that it could legally transfer the parcel by quick claim deed, just like any other property owner, and did so via administrative action. Quick claim deed was signed October 10th, 2017, and filed with the Olmsted County Recorder November 20th, 2017, as document number A1437973. Melanie, do you have anything to add to this?
I don't, but I am here to answer any questions that anyone has.
Well, if you know Melanie, she's our city attorney. If you have any questions on this, now's the time to ask. Because what we are going to be asked to do is to reaffirm the administrative action taken by staff via quick claim deed dated October 10th, 2017. You have a question? Josh?
No, makes sense.
Craig?
No, just wanted to reiterate.
Jeremiah? Do you have anything you want to add, Melanie? I guess we're all good with this.
No, I don't. Um, I, you know, I put as much information as I had in this request for council action, so I tried to anticipate questions and ask them, or, you know, answer them in my information, so.
You did a very nice job. You seem to have answered all the questions.
Very good, thank you. Um, the city staff is looking for just a motion to, to reaffirm that action that was taken.
So, like I said, we're looking for, and Melanie said also, we're looking to reaffirm the administrative action taken by staff via quick claim deed dated October 10th, 2017. Do we have that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second? I'll second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That carries. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Melanie. You also can stay here if you want, it's up to you.
I just might.
Next item will be resolution receiving feasibility study and calling for public hearing 22 and 23 CIP streets and utility improvements. We'll rescind it, right? SEH has completed the feasibility study for the 2022-2023 CIP, which were presented 6/22/21. At that meeting, council accepted the feasibility study, set the public hearing, and approved resolution 2021-11. Staff is recommending rescinding resolution 2021-11 and approving a new resolution with an updated phased plan and new hearing date. The CIP project is being broken into two sections, Phase 1, 2022, and Phase 2, 2023. The next step is to set a public hearing date to discuss the proposed Phase 1 project assessments. Public comments will be heard at that meeting. Staff will send out notices to the property owners within the proposed project area and publish twice in a newspaper. This public hearing could be scheduled on the 10th of August. Once the public hearing has been held, the council will be determined at that time if they should proceed with the 2022-2023 CIP, which will need a four-fiz vote. So, the first action needed is to rescind resolution 2021-11. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to rescind it.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Next motion is to adopt resolution 2021, dash, the resolution receiving feasibility study and calling for public hearing on 2022-2023 street utility projects. Do we have a motion for that?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Do we need a motion to set the public hearing?
You, that was part of the second.
Okay, all right. Goes on to that one. Next item, under motions in general business. Resolution approving the issuance of general obligation refunding bond. Staff is working with Paul Dono to refinance the 2013 A general obligation fire station bond. Refinancing this bond will have a potential savings of $127,586. Current interest rate is 3.32. Refinancing resulting in estimated interest rate of 1.50 for the outstanding principal balance. The refinanced bond will take place through a private placement process using a label banks. So council action requested would be to approve or deny resolution approving the issuance of general obligation refunding bonds. Motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That carries. Conditional use permit request, fence 411 South Main. Is that John?
Jonah.
Jonah Van...
Rosy.
Rosy has applied for an additional use permit per section in order to put up a fence in his backyard, which is in the B1 Commercial Business District. It's noted that the south fence lane was actually a city property. This parcel is owned by the city and contains a storm sewer main. Van Rosky has met with hail and understands the fence may temporarily have to be moved if work is needed on this storm sewer main, and he will not be cementing in the poles. Staff has discussed releasing this property, retaining adhesion, but feel at this time we should continue owning the parcel in case the city purchased the property to the south for a future city hall or other use, and this parcel would be used for his upper yard. Planning commission held a public hearing with no objections, they are recommending approval of variance. Anything to add, Josh?
No, I wasn't at this meeting.
Okay. Council action requested would be to approve the conditional use permit as recommended. Those are...
Cheryl, do you make them sign anything? City sells this house, and the next year, what happens then? The new owners going home?
It'll be part of the building permit, there's an area for these kind of comments and so on.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, we look for a motion to approve the conditional use permit as recommended.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that also carries. Next will be a learner's request at the 02 Blackman Court. Joe Manning has applied for six-foot variance from the required 20-foot rear yard setback as per section 1325.03. If approved, Manning will construct a 24-by-36 garage and wants to retain as much rear yard green space area as possible. The planning commission held a public hearing with no objections, they are recommending approval of the variance. You wanted that one either, Josh?
No, it's all...
No written oral comments. Council action requested is to approve the variance as recommended. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, we're looking for a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Oh, you got a second and a third there. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that also carries. That takes us out of that. Motion's in general business, and takes us to mayor's staff and consultant boards. Mayor's report for tonight. Zidia Stewartville would like to send her sympathies to the families of Virgil Height, excuse me, that's Kevin's dad, if you didn't know it. Paul Gross, Mark Langley, and Mike Messedett. We just came out of Summerfest. Like to send a thank you to the chamber board, Juan, Myrna, and all the volunteers who stepped up, and there was a lot of volunteers who stepped up. It was an unbelievable great success. From what I've heard, everyone enjoyed it out there. They're all looking at bigger and better things for next year. There's a lot of planning going on already. I must say, and Cheryl tells me the same thing every year, but I have never seen that many people on the parade room. I absolutely have not, never seen that many of this. Fantastic for the turnout. I think the turnout for the fireworks was just as big, from what I heard. Everywhere you went, there was people sitting and watching. Hope everybody had a good time, the dance was a success.
Petting Zoo.
No problems.
Petting Zoo is a great success.
Petting Zoo, yeah, that's right. I thought they'd have you in a cage there.
How many different ones have you sponsored?
Yeah, which one?
Everything's inspired by fire.
You should have gave them a case of water, too. But, thank you to everyone who put their time in and volunteered. It's a big deal. It's a great deal for our town. Now, don't forget, coming up this weekend, we're seeing Lions 37th Annual Chicken Barbecue and Dance. Chicken Dance. It was sad, man. Huh? It's a great time. If you've never been there, it is a good time. Go have a big fan there, it's always good. And that goes right along with the Rook River Antique Show that's also this weekend, just down at the racetrack. Take a trip south here, you're like stepping back in time. It's like coming out and helping me and the farm, it's like the old times.
The goats.
Yeah, the goats and sheep and everything. So get down there, if you can, help our neighbors out to the south. The second annual Stewartville Foundation Golf Tournament is August 7th. Who do we hook up with on that? You or any board member?
I've got the stuff here.
Okay, Cheryl's got stuff if you need to get lined up. And don't forget, the American Legion Golf Tournament will be August 21st this year. Good time ahead by all. All right, that's all I've got. City administrative board. Or, well, just a second. I forgot one thing. Cheryl mentioned to me and Lexi probably, are we canceled for tomorrow night or not?
Yes, we're canceled. And we added it on to, um, we had two dates, so August eleventh, we're gonna have Rock River Jam come back. Um, because they kind of got rained out last, last week, they played an hour or so. And then August eighteenth will be the Chubs, who are scheduled to play tonight.
Well, it's canceled from our end.
Tomorrow night's concert, free concerts canceled because of all the storm warnings that got out. Watch you in storm watch. Look for that tornado action. Alright, city administrative report.
Alrighty, reports in your packet. Kind of comment further on Summer Fest, we had a chamber board meeting today. The comments predominantly from all of them that they have gotten from the public have been very good. Uh, we've talked about little semantical things that we'll do or things we might look at out at the park to improve, like one of them was like lighting, kind of a night light type thing. But all the comments they said were really good, it was a good layout. And there's gonna be a wrap-up meeting coming up in a couple weeks, so if you do get additional comments or any of you have ideas yourselves, get them in to me and then we'll get those relayed as we start, like the mayor pointed out, planning for next year. They also got good comments on the parade route, and it was changed obviously, but it came back good for that too. And of course, the attendance was really good, so. We'll keep working on it. I think they're already working on finding some funding aspects to add to the fireworks. And so they do want a plea put out to the public, because as the public comments, oh, it'd be nice to see a little extra. It takes donations, and we have a lot of great sponsors in this community that help us with what we got. But the public is sure always welcome to donate to the chamber to add to it, and that'll help.
I don't think the public realizes the howlers that the fire department guys put in.
And to load those tubes.
It's their whole Fourth of July experience. But they enjoy it. Any questions for Bill?
Oh, then just one more thing. Obviously, Carl's kind of touched on it, as we started looking at the budget closely, but traditionally here in August, September, first part of September, anytime in August, we should probably have some kind of workshop with you. So that if you have ideas or projects you want us to look into, um, we can get those formulated. Obviously, Carl will be working with all the department heads for department request items. And so, obviously, we can do that on a separate kind of setup, or we can do like we've done with these last work sessions, do something prior or after a meeting. So give that some thought and let Carl or myself know.
We'll be trying to sneak in real ones. Any questions for the administrative bill? Gee, you're good for another week's bill.
As they flip coins up there.
Finance director, Carolyn.
Um, as Bill said, I'm working on budget stuff and kind of moving forward and looking at that. And Bill and I actually did a meeting, just trying to look at, you know, are there any options for maybe any of our benefits that we could look at and have still the great benefits that we do maybe at a lesser cost? Because that's one of our huge things that we deal with. Um, then, yeah, I would like to set up a meeting maybe an hour before the next, the meeting on August tenth. And then if you guys have any ideas, or if you think it's warranted that we have that meeting, so we can kind of sit down and just put ideas together before the end of August, because then at the end of August, I will bring that everything to you, you know, like a preliminary budget, kind of where we're at with all the numbers, based on all the things that we would like to do or put in there. And then that then needs to be tweaked from there, and it has to get to the county by the end of September. And we can kind of do it however we'd like to, but it was kind of nice to have it done earlier on last year, and just we had that opportunity to really take a look at it and and have a good sense of what we wanted to do and move forward with before the end of September. I don't like wait until the end, so. So think about that and let me know if you think that, you know, before that August tenth meeting, we want to meet and go through it, or if you guys just want to email me or Bill, ideas or thoughts, and just let us kind of go with it, or how you'd like to do it.
Alright. Any questions for Carolyn? Alright, no public corps director report tonight?
No.
City engineer, Jenna?
Alright, so the C I B project is getting closer to finishing. All of the storm sewer pipe is in. The one last underground item we have is to finish up the, um, subdrain on first, and they're working on disconnecting all of the temporary water mains, so that should be gone pretty soon. They will start paving tomorrow. Um, they will start on second on the hillside. Trying to get that done before any severe weather would start tomorrow, so. It's potential that that's the only segment they will get done, but if the rain holds off, or depending on what weather does for us, uh, they'll, they'll keep going and getting businesses access and keeping things rotated so that we can, um, keep those businesses open and access open. So, but obviously first will be the last thing then, since they still need the subdrain.
Why does that one look so good? Like, that road looks like it got dug up worse than any other road I've ever seen.
Yeah, that gave them all trouble, this stretch in here.
This was, that was the worst stretch because of the telecommunications in it. Um, there is a very large duck bank in there, and it, um, is very old and made out of small concrete sections, so every time they had to cross under and move, um, they did have to, um, support it and things, and our water main was actually underneath the duck bank. So, we moved our water main, since that was installed on top of our water main to the south side of the road. The gas had to get moved before that happened, so yes, a lot more things moved in that block, or two blocks, um, to make things happen and not to shut down the telecommunications in that area, so. So yes, you have seen a little more destruction.
Yeah, seems like they spent as much time on that, two blocks, they have a whole.
It was always known through design and everything that that was going to be the worst, and they did save the worst part for last. So I guess for the public to be aware that paving's gonna be happening, um, our concrete contractor will be, he's gone for a short period of time, will be back to start finishing everything up, but all driveways where the curving gutter was put in were poured, so um, once we hear that hit that curing period, they will all be allowed in. And then, let's see. Moving forward with the West Development Utility Extension and Bear Cave Estates, we did meet with them, with Bear Cave Estates, and their engineer last week, so we have a plan of attack for that one. Looking forward to possibly doing winter work to get that extension done. And I guess we'll keep moving forward with this, the next C I B project after we have our meeting in August. But otherwise, development projects, we keep hearing a lot of different potentials for the city, which is really exciting.
Thank you, Jenna. Any questions for C engineer? Thanks. No library director named, no fire chief, but we have a new one. We have pool director report, we have the eighth one. Our well-tanned pool director will be here to give us a report.
Something like that.
Spent a lot of time on her getting that tan.
Uh, well, you guys saw the notes from last time. I'll update you since then. Last time we had, now this is just open swim. So over about seventy-three hundred people. As of today, we are just under fifteen thousand. That's just open swim. So swim lessons, we have four hundred and fifty kids a day. Uh, July fourth, very, very busy. First Farmers donated a thousand sunglasses for patrons, I was really neat. All the kids got sunglasses, we handed them out July third, fourth, fifth. And according to the chamber, it was the most successful teen night. We had two hundred lined up before we even opened. They want to schedule another one in August, kind of like a back-to-school bash. We had a DJ, which was a hit. Uh, both things on the maintenance list, which you guys know the heater's been fixed. Uh, the zip line, knock on wood, is working. So, yeah, it's been a few years. Um, so right now it is working, and all the maintenance too.
Any questions for our pool director, Jake? Are you gonna be a monthly Jake, or just every other month you're gonna come, or?
Yeah, once a month, if that's what you get for.
Yeah, also.
So if you want me month from today or the end of the month, whatever works, probably the end of the month would work best, kind of the end of the season, yeah.
So do that. Everything's, everything else is working good for you.
Oh, yeah. We've been, we've been busy from other times, which is good. We'll take them and spend good. You're a.
Do the other, do the other communities call ahead when they have a buzz vote coming up?
Yeah.
What kind of a day notice do they give yours?
Well, they've gotten really good. I have the Kingdom Kids comes, and they'll call ahead a month before, within four days they're coming. You had a lot of rock groups. Uh, since you guys have lowered the, which is nice, the pool passes, we sold more of those punch cards. I think we're at four hundred and thirty we ended with today. You know, it's been a lot about, so which is.
I bet you guys are good swimming, why not do?
Yeah, it's been happening, so, yeah.
Alright, any questions for pool director here? Thanks for coming in.
Yeah, you bet.
You can stay if you want.
Go after swim if you want. Private lessons or something.
Alright, committee commission board reports. Chamber Congress, we've got nothing, they're back.
Sean just wanted you to know all the chamber and their volunteer groups, Sons of Serb did a great job, and citizens. First of all, the chamber and the volunteer groups, and Sons of Serb down at the park cleaning up. And then he also wanted you to know that the parade route, and that's what, thanks to citizens, did a way better job than picking up after themselves afterwards. So that's what keeps those things going, so.
Uh, E D A H R A, we got a meeting next week. Finance? Library?
Nothing.
Park board?
Uh, I haven't met last night.
And I forgot to come. Please take my apology. Chair and vice president?
Ted, yeah, okay.
Next one to, I don't know about me there. Anything on report besides me not showing up?
I wasn't even gonna talk about that, but, um, uh, there was, there was just a couple of, um, items. One, one was that we had the volunteer group that was working on the, um, on the, uh, volleyball court out at, out at expanding that, out at, out at Bear Cave to add another, another net and stuff. And then some of the cost for like the sand and stuff, it turned, came out to be a little bit more than what we anticipated, and so um, we went ahead and authorized the, the extra expense, and with the understanding that that group's gonna do the fundraising to, to pay the city back for it. And then, um, I guess Sean figured out that with the funds we allocated, uh, we can get a different kind of picnic table than what we've normally been getting, um, for, to, to put out to the, they have theaters, so instead of five, we can get ten. You know, they're about half the price, because they're not rubber coated, they're like powder coated or something, so hopefully they'll still be heavy duty enough and um, and we'll just be able to have more of them.
Yeah. That's it?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Personnel? Nothing at this time. Plan zoning?
Uh, we meet, we're gonna have meeting in August.
You got the minutes on July sixth here, and you're meeting in August, you said, correct? Public safety?
Public.
Public works? Ready?
Report.
Roll call.
Uh, their meeting was canceled, so we need to get in here at the end of the month.
Alright, let's do one A. Men, uh, transit advisory committee? Must be nothing.
I can learn to understand you much better if I can.
I don't know where I can. She's learning to understand you better.
The whole communication's there back in tonight?
It's out of the year, remember?
I don't know.
It's out of the year.
Nobody, open mic, breathe, you want to open mic? Alright, last motion for the evening, most wants to do a jury. Do we have a motion, do a jury? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?